Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, June 3rd, 2019, at 7:30. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As always, if everyone has, if you have a cellphone, please make sure it's turned off for duration of the meeting. If you haven't signed off yet, signed for public speaking, please do so. Do we have anyone signed up for public speaking tonight?
I think there was one.
One person, if you want to make sure you add your name, I'll go ahead and get you in. You good? Okay, cool. Future meetings. Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, 7:30. Wayside Exhibits Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, Saturday, June 29th, 2019, at 9:30 a.m., Town Square. And our next town council meeting will be Monday, July 1st, 2019, at 7:30 p.m., Town Office. Any other meetings, gentlemen, that missed? No?
Nope.
Okay. All right, moving on to meeting items. Need to approve the minutes from May 6th, 2019. If everyone's had a chance to hopefully peruse these.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Any omissions or corrections?
I had none.
No, sir.
No? You're good?
Add or modify.
All right. Oh, first before we go forward, we are down to three commissioners tonight. Commissioner Buckman and Commissioner Sweeney are out tonight, so it's going to be sort of a tight meeting here. Okay, so that being the case, I need someone to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 6th meeting as presented.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Commissioner O'Donnell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, 3 to 0. Commissioner Buckman and Sweeney absent. Police report?
He's got a...
Something looks like.
Check her.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Blanchard, can you mention the date for the planning commission meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was the date again? I mean, I'm at May...
It's going to be June 20th, the tentative, right now, depending on the board action tonight.
We do have a planning meeting scheduled for June 20th, tentative, right now. Deputy?
Good evening. Deputy Whitehouse with the Sheriff's Office. This is the May 2019 police report. Not a whole lot of stuff to report for the month of May. I guess the biggest thing we had was at the carnival at Mother Seaton School, which is on the back page here. We were, myself and Deputy Aholt and Sergeant Hillman, we each, we were up here every night. So, we didn't have any issues there. Just some minor juvenile issues. Took care of that, addressed those. The calls for service up top, there's two burglaries, that was actually an abandoned house, which had property in it, but it was the same house twice. That's what those two burglaries are from, so. The alarms, there was 10 of those. The bulk of those were from the PNC Bank ATM down at Silo Hill Shopping Center. I've been to the bank and addressed that with them to see if maybe they can get somebody from maintenance to go out and just kind of look at it, see why we're going out there so many times. Let's see, the traffic stats for the month, 152 stops. You can see the citations in the mornings there. There was nine traffic arrests, a criminal arrest, two juvenile arrests. One of those juvenile arrests was actually a theft from a vehicle. I know we've had some issues with thefts from vehicles. Was able to, with the help of Jimmy Click, in the video, accessing the video from the town cameras, was able to come up with a suspect in that, as being a juvenile, and he's going to be charged accordingly. I just got to put the paperwork in for that, and that'll be done. Let's see, the other, I think the other juvenile arrest there was somebody from the carnival. Yeah, it was actually, actually two from the carnival, so, one pending and something else from the carnival. Let's see, the, so you got the violations there. We did serve a warrant. So, I see on the back page, there are the special assignments we had, like I said, Deputy Aholt and myself, we're at the carnival every night of the week. We had the Family Fun Festival, that was at the, I think it was a Saturday, the 11th, I think it was out back here, and I had the town meeting. As far as the additional information, court days, you can see the arrests there. Like I said, the minor juvenile issues at the carnival that were addressed, and there was a deceased person at the west end of town, that ended up being like a prescription drug overdose kind of thing. And as you see, the burglaries here were from these, an abandoned house, with that being the same house two times. So, any questions with that? Sorry, I kind of went quick again, but...
Any questions, gentlemen?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you for your presence at the carnival.
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor? Anything?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just got one, out the pools open, I'm sure, I'm hoping your patrols will be...
Yep.
Obviously going up there and patrolling the pool on weekends.
Absolutely.
And then I do believe we open up full-time after school, that's out, right, on the 19th?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think we open up full-time on the 15th.
Oh, okay.
Fourteenth.
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 Okay.
Mr. President, pro temp?
Yes, sorry.
Just a reminder, Community Day's coming up, and we definitely hope to see you there. I know...
We'll be there all day.
The schedule's been modified a little bit, so that might be...
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we plan on being there for the duration of it, from the start of the breakfast, I think, at the firehouse, till fireworks are over.
Excellent.
Awesome, thank you.
So, yep.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thanks.
Moving on to the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. This is the Town Manager's Report for April of 2019. I'll highlight some of the key areas. Under Streets, staff replaced and repaired street, some streetlights around town. Staff and the contractor trimmed and removed trees along Chesapeake Avenue, as long as, as well as removing an old fence, filling in holes, seeded and mulched along Chesapeake Avenue. Contractor completed two new sections, a sidewalk and the head wall along Creamery Road, and staff conducted their monthly street sweeping and cleaning along East and West Main Street. Related to Parks, they conducted their monthly park maintenance checks. They prepared the park restroom buildings and the dog park for the summer season. Put mulcher on the playground equipment in Memorial Park. Picked up new trees and assisted with the Arbor Day celebration. Staff and a contractor installed a new toilet and hand dryers in the Memorial Park bathrooms. Staff prepared the ball fields for the season. Repaired park roads and millings in the potholes. Installed six stream-side forest buffer signs along Willow Ridge and prepared the garden plots. Related to Water, Rainbow Lake is still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. Wells number three, four, and five are still shut off to allow less gallons per minute through the plant. Since the LG Sonic was installed at the beginning of April, the water has become much clearer and, and staff is noting, noticing a difference in the water quality. We produced an average of 258,356 gallons per day and consumed an average of 229,159 gallons per day, which is the equivalent of 12.9 percent, the difference is 12.9 percent is backwash water. In the month of April, we purchased 449,400 gallons of water from the Mount this month. Wastewater, we received about 4.8 inches of precipitation. The average is 3.8 for the month of April. We currently have a surplus of 12.03 inches over the last six months. We treated 690,000 gallons per day at the wastewater treatment plant and consumed 229,159 gallons per day, which means that 66.8 percent of the wastewater treated in the month of April was wild water. The wild water percentage decreased by 10.7 percent from the month of March. Speaking with Mr. Fissell, he does see some improvements at the plant, so I believe that the re-lining has had a positive effect. We had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of April, however, we did exceed the design capacity five times in the month of April. Just some noted, noteworthy items, staff continued to upgrade some of the water meters. All staff attended mandatory MS4 training here in the conference room. Staff conducted the biannual fire hydrant flushing. The chemical usage is down at the wastewater treatment plant as the BIOLAC is treating well. That's good news. And then the town hosted graduate students from the University of Maryland specializing in experimental exploration of innovations at the nexus of food, energy, and water systems. Mr. Fissell led a tour of the town's green sustainable efforts, such as the wastewater treatment plant, the solar fields, LG Sonic, Power Star, and the lagoon storage. They actually reached out to the town because of things that they've read on our sustainable efforts. I had one other note, noted item that I wanted to get out there. As of right now, we only have one vendor for the farmer's market, so please be reaching out to anybody that you know, anybody that's interested in being a vendor at the farmer's market, whether it's fruit, veggies, baked goods, meats, crafts, please have them contact the town office. Ms. Nail said she spoke to the state, and apparently a lot of the farmer, smaller farmers markets are going to the wayside, and the vendors are going to your larger ones, but we obviously want to keep it here in Emmitsburg, so, anybody, please.
Is profits not just high enough, I guess, for them to try to keep going, or?
I think there's so many competing farmers markets.
Chinatown, Thurmont, etc.
Like discussions to move it to Saturday mornings, but a lot of the vendors are going to your larger ones, so, we're looking for any options, so, please contact the town office.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
That's Manager's Report.
Moving on to the Town Planner's Report.
Okay, this is the Town Planner's Report for April 2019. I'm also going to highlight some key areas. Held community outreach meetings on the proposed sign amendment on April 8th, 15th, 22nd, and the 29th. Under Grants, I created press releases for the $5,000 Keep Maryland Beautiful grant. You may see around town, around the parks and at the pool, the six recycling bins that I purchased are now up and about, so, thank you Jimmy and the staff for putting those out. $3,000 Chesapeake Bay Trust grant, create a flyer on the new storm drain marker program. We're going to distribute this in future sewer mail, and water bills, bill mailings. I applied for a $5,000 community grant from the Walmart Foundation. We're finalizing the kiosk panel grant-funded project. This will be installed tomorrow by a contractor. Under MS4, like Kathy said, we held the annual MS4 employee training on the 9th, met with the town clerk on the 22nd regarding potential rain barrel programs. We're potentially going to be applying for a grant through the Chesapeake Bay Trust. Under Permits and Zoning, processed and approved, three sheds, two signed, one fence, 29 cross connection permits. Out of those, 26 were high hazard and three were low hazard, so we're very happy to see people doing that early. One detached garage, one addition, and two street closures. Also processed paperwork to implement the new cross connection program. Attended a bridge meeting on the 4th. The scheduled complete date is still August 2nd, 2019. I wrote a newsletter article in the town's Cars Carbon Footprint and the benefit of switching to an all-electric vehicle, and I also assisted the Sewage Department with their new garage permit at the sewer plant. And that's all the highlighted areas.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I was able to represent the town at the Cottonton High School graduation. It was a great ceremony. Pleased to say the last of the O'Donnells is now through Cottonton, so we're three for three. I attended the carnival, it looked pretty busy the whole time, the weather held out, more or less, it was well done. Deputies were always very visible, that was great to see. I was able to attend the Up and Out graduation at the Seaton Center. That's the program where the daughters go through kind of a boot camp with folks from the area, and they matriculate once they've satisfied the program's requirements and have a better sense of how to move themselves up sort of the economic food chain, and that was pretty interesting. And that was well attended, I saw the mayor there also. Sort of in a different direction, sort of on a sad note, on a sad note, definitely. I attended the funeral of Joe Lebherz, the Mount St. Mary's government liaison. Joe passed away about a week and a half ago. It was a very well-attended funeral down in Frederick City, a very moving ceremony, and it was, it was a nice tribute to him. It was, it was, you know, Joe was a good friend, and I will definitely, I do miss him. Changing gears. Community Heritage Day is coming up. Mr. Sweeney's not here to give its commercial, so I will throw in, there are going to be some new changes this year. We'll have virtually all the same events at the Community Heritage Day event, or Day, I should say, but my understanding is the breakfast, that the Vigilant Host Company typically serves in the firehouse on Main Street, will be at the Event Complex. That was my last understanding. If that changes, I'm sure we'll put something forward. The events for the day, like the field games and the activities, will be pushed to later in the day. I believe they're going to be starting either around 11 or noon. I know that there's going to be a ribbon cutting on Main Street at about 9 o'clock. There will be many cycling events throughout town. The earliest starts at 8 o'clock in the morning, so please expect more cyclists on the road. The Bike Safety Rodeo will be different this year. It won't be a one-hour event, but it will go from 1 to 4, where young people can be dropped in, so they have more of a chance, and there'll be bikes on site that they can use, and helmets will be provided if, if young people don't have helmets or bikes. So, the course will be taught, again, by the Frederick Bicycle Coalition, and it's also co-sponsored by the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office, so thank you to the Sheriff's Office also for joining in. The Beer Garden will return, so there will be a lot of events going on at Community Heritage Day. They'll just start later. Again, there'll be fireworks, again, there'll be the parade and the usual fun stuff, like good food and music and so on. And the pool will be free, I believe we vote on that today? Is that something, or have we already approved that? I don't recall, so.
We can do it under the consent agenda.
Okay.
Didn't make it onto the agenda packet.
Okay, all right. Just kind of double-checking on that. I had to contact staff a number of times this, the past three weeks regarding trail stuff. They were very helpful. Staff, thank you. Town Manager, thank you for your staff's effective and professional interactions. We have a trail day coming up on June 22nd. We have an informal trail day on June 30th with the NICA young people, and REI will be there. They're starting a national program, and they decided to start it here in Emmitsburg. Excited about that. And the last item, I have two questions for town staff related to a trash collection delay and a recycling collection delay. I don't know if anything got to the website or Channel 99, but I don't know if that might alleviate phone calls and issues like that, but was anything posted about delayed collection? It was...
Memorial Day?
No, no, no. Last, you know, prior to last week. The second-to-last collection before Memorial Day, there was a delay, and there was a delay, I want to say, this past weekend for recycling. I saw them Saturday morning as opposed to on Friday, so I don't know if, if that was connected to it.
That would have been the county, so I don't know why, I don't, if we were not notified, we wouldn't have put it up.
Okay.
And I know, I think the front office fielded some phone calls today about missed pickups, but I'll have them follow up on any reason why there were delays.
Okay.
In May, other than, and it's not Memorial Day week.
It was, it was preceding that for garbage, and this past week, it was recycling, so that may have been like an echo from Memorial Day.
Yeah, if, if it was recycling, that would have been Memorial Day, they would have bumped it one week, one day.
Okay, all right.
But the trash pickup, there's, the only delay should have been Memorial Day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Ritz?
Parks and Recreation meeting will be on June 18th. It's moved from May to June due to scheduling issues, so if anyone's interested in attending, please do so. Tuesday, June 18th at 7:30 here at the town office. And this Friday, June 7th, is our first of several concerts in the park. See Irish Band this Saturday, 6 o'clock. Hope to see everyone there. That's all I have, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. For myself, obviously, as Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, Cottonton High School graduation. Many students will be out of school within two weeks. They'll be singing Alice Cooper's school stuff for the summer very soon. Encourage your young people to participate in activities in the local area. The pool is a great place to hang out, and the course concerts during the weekends, and we have a great park system in Maryland'sburg also, so hopefully everyone will be participating in lots of activities. That's the only comment I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Excuse me. May 1st, we had the Green Team meeting with Jenny Willoughby, Sustainability Manager for City of Frederick. On May 1st, Hood College, a presenter, panel member with our county executive and the mayor from City of Frederick. Topic was climate change. Met with the Playground Specialist, staff, Town Manager, and Civitank Group, and I think we're going to have another meeting tomorrow with them. And so that's rolling along on the all-inclusive playground set. Welcome Home at the Seaton Center, that was a Saturday, there was a guest speaker there. We'll be, I was at the Climate Change Conference Leadership Academy, the second set. I'll attend the third set here next week. It's a terrific course. Mount St. Mary's ROTC graduation on arena. Nine new officers were commissioned. It's the 99th year that they've had a, had commissioning of officers there. It's a very special and honored tradition there at the, at the mound. Once the new commissioned officer get his bars, somebody special who's a non-commissioned officer or sergeant or thereabouts will come up, and he'll get the first salute from the non-commissioned officer, and they'll shake hands, and, and the non-commissioned officer gets a silver dollar. It's really a terrific, terrific, terrific program. We had some meetings with Michael Kay, the State Forester, bids, bids, our bid are coming in, and we'll work with that, date or date. EBPA Breakfast, we sponsored that for them, and our plan made a great presentation, and our town clerk was there, and it was well-received, and Jan Gardner was our guest speaker. She then came over and, and had a ribbon cutting for the, our electric vehicles, stations. She commented that we have four and the county has one, so she's a...
Wow.
We're up, we're up 94% to nothing over the county on renewable...
Nice.
Renewable energy, but she, some good news, this building is, they're, they're going to renewable solar energy, and this building will be put on, on their account, so we, the money we pay here will go as renewable energy, so we'll be up to almost 100% renewable energy for the town for the best we can, so. We're doing our part for the future and mitigation and adaptive capacity in that, that area. Getting ahead, as Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, was a, this was kind of a really stirring, special time to be over for the wonderful people who are making the journey that they're going to step out, not stay where they are, we're going to go ahead and take control of our lives and our destiny. Was there at noon for the opening of the pool, and it went off very well. I signed in, but I didn't go swimming. They did check my card, and your daughter signed me in, so.
Work as a lifeguard, yes.
And Joe Leopards was a very dear friend of the town, and I had the opportunity to work for him, oh, from going back to the 90s, when he was with the Chamber of Commerce to up here on several projects, and it was a role with the mound, and a very special person in a lost heart community, a great friend, and I want to thank Commissioner O'Donnell for standing in and representing the town, and when it was a very special, emotional time, and I'm glad he got the opportunity, especially with his daughter graduating. I, the, I think that's about it. There, there are more things going on here, a lot of commercials, things are breaking and blooming, so it's, it's a good time to be in Emmitsburg. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We have one person sign up for public comments, and since it's a unique issue, not on the actual agenda items, you want to call him up and speak?
Yeah, I don't really know how this works.
All we ask you to do is state your name and your address for the record, so they can get in there.
Okay.
Come on up, close the mic.
Is this working? I'm definitely on here.
It's on.
Okay. So, my name is Kelsey Wales, I live at 2055 Pembroke Court, kind of on the edge of town, and this is my first time coming here, and I wanted to find out or ask, in the neighborhood where I live, I've seen this enormous influx of box turtles hanging around, which is amazing because turtle populations in almost the entire eastern United States has been declining for a long time, and for that to be a pretty good haven for them is pretty impressive because there's a lot of wetlands, there's a lot of trees and stuff going on, and I was wondering if something could perhaps be done to like put up a turtle crossing sign anywhere, where those areas, where they're kind of traveling around. I was on a walk the other day, and I saw one turtle on one end of the neighborhood, and another one was laying eggs in my yard, which was kind of cool, but also, while I don't think, you know, the, the main, the main danger for a turtle are people's cars, people's lawnmowers, and while I don't think people intentionally go out to harm wildlife, I, I think they, they would, if they don't know it's there in the first place, that might be an issue. So, I mean, this seems like a really like ecology-friendly area, so, I don't know, I just, it's something I noticed, and if that can maybe happen, that would be really good for everyone, I think.
Okay.
Something special for our Green Team.
Yeah, besides staff, anything we can possibly address? I mean...
Is there, I mean, obviously I can't put turtle crossing signs all over the development. Is there a particular place that would be, that you've noticed would be more beneficial for it? We can certainly get our notice up on Facebook and Channel 99 and, you know, our other avenues, and put it in our newsletter for people to beware. I think it's kind of cool, too, but is there a particular place that you feel these signs would be more beneficial?
Um, I noticed, I noticed a good deal of them, and that's sort of, there's this sort of like wetland-y, marshy area behind where like the, the convenience store, liquor store is, right, near where the cemetery is. They like, they like that sort of wet area, and that's where I find like half the ones that I spot, and they're all different box turtles, which is great. Maybe, if it's at all possible, you know, in those two main entrances to the neighborhood, like where you kind of scoot into Pembroke or, or like where Brookfield is, that's where I'm seeing them the most, but I'm one person in one neighborhood, so I don't know if this is something that's also in the town.
I personally think it'd be kind of cool, too. I mean, I don't know, some sort of, I mean, eco-friendly, you know, I mean, I personally see a lot of turtles, too, myself, driving around, I'm like, it seems to be a, ignoring a number of them right now.
And right around when the school year starts again, all these nests that they've been making and, you know, I have a marker around the one in my yard, they're going to be hatching, they're going to be scooting around, and they're going to be near impossible to see, so if people are aware that they might be scooting around when they're mowing their lawns or riding their bikes or driving home from a busy day work, maybe they'll keep an eye out for them, and, you know, these animals live a long time, so.
There you go.
Yeah.
Cool. All right. Appreciate you coming in, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I mean, Pembroke Woods has one entrance essentially, and Brookfield has one entrance essentially at this point in time. I guess it wouldn't be harmful to just put turtle crossing sort of somewhere beyond the intersection with Main Street on Timbermill Run and perhaps on Brookfield Drive, maybe a little bit further in. Like, I tend to see the turtles crossing where the neighborhoods abut on Brookfield Drive. There's, there's sort of a green corridor there. Haven't seen any bears yet, but I'm looking forward to it. But those rowdy little turtles, they're, they're, that's, you know, they're crossing a bunch, and admittedly, I see them on Irish Town Road. They are...
Yeah, makes sense. Mm-hmm. Yeah, we'll see what we can do from our end, and there's, you know, the homeowners' Association out there, and it sounds like a really good thing for the Green Team also, so we're certainly looking to it and see what we can do from our end and get notice out for people to beware.
They always seem to be heading toward the Willet's House, I don't know.
It's quite wet, unfortunately, back there.
Uh-oh, watch out, watch out. Hanging out.
My sanctuary.
Great.
Coincidence.
Moving on, administrative business. I don't believe we have anything scheduled, town stuff, anything?
No.
Can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Just unrelated to these items, but related to what was reported earlier. Of the students in the experiential program from College Park, is there any report that they're going to share with us or that we're put forward? We could, we could glean from the professor or the administrator?
I don't, I'd have to go back and check my email to see what she was going to, I think there was a report, or if they were going to do pay, I think that was to help their graduate students, so that they would be doing their papers. I'll certainly reach out to her and see if there's anything available.
Because, I mean, literally, the, the feedback, you know, if there is something supportive of what we're doing, that'd be good to hear, but also something critical of what we're doing, like, or something that we're missing, that would be good to hear as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll check.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, looks like we have two appointments to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Mr. Commissioner Ritz, do you want to say anything about this?
No, just two, two members that are very consistent with attending meetings and they would like to continue, so I, hopefully everyone is agreeable to that.
Want to take both of them as a total?
What's that?
Take both of them together as a vote?
I don't know.
If we have consent basically for both Carolyn Miller and Martin Miller. Marty Miller?
I make a motion to accept Carolyn Miller and Martin Miller as Parks and Recreation Committee members for the next two years. The term being three fifteen twenty nineteen through three fifteen twenty twenty-one.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, three zero. Commissioner Sweeney and Commissioner Buckman absent. Okay, thank you. And what was the other item we wanted to bring on? The pool, that's right, that's right.
If you'll give consent for the pool, yes.
Okay. It was brought up the idea of having a free day at the pool on our community day. I think it's a fantastic idea. I know we've done it in the past, at least last couple of years. Do we have a motion to bring that on?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to continue the tradition of having the pool free on Community Day on June twenty-ninth twenty nineteen from opening to close of the Emmitsburg Community Pool.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion to make the pool free on Community Day and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, three zero. I commend Commissioner Sweeney and Commissioner Buckman absent. Okay. Moving on to the treasurer's report. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir, thank you. As of May first twenty nineteen, our cash balance forward was five million five hundred eight thousand two hundred nine dollars. Deposits were one million one hundred eighty-one thousand fifty-four dollars. Withdrawals were one million two hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred and three dollars. The operating balance forward is five million four hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred sixty dollars. Just for note, there is a million dollar check listed there for a CD deposit. I don't recall however if that was for a single CD or was that ultimately determined for two CDs?
It was for two, each at five hundred thousand.
Terrific. And that's a rather sizable check. I called the mayor when that was put in front of me to verify that this was the town's intent and Mr. Mayor called me promptly and the check was issued.
The million dollar question, right? Okay.
Good one.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the treasurer? No? Report stands. Planning Commission report, I'll switch hats there for a second. We had a Planning Commission meeting last Monday and of course our main issue was spoken about the Rutter's gas station store going tentatively outside of town. We basically tentatively approved it, moved forward, I guess that would be the word I guess I want to use, to the next step basically as far as the site plan is concerned.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Any questions for me?
I guess as chair, I just, you know, I'll reiterate what I've been reiterating. I think it's very important for the Planning Commission and for this board to look for the best and highest use of that property. I see that Rutter's, you know, they've done their homework, they're moving forward with it, which is great. I really hope that what comes forward is the best product. It's a gateway position, it's very visible. When you come in one forty, it will sit there like a gas station on a hill and we want it to be, you know, putting our best foot forward, not something lesser and mediocre. So, I hope it is of a quality design with quality materials, not something that is plastic and glass and aluminum and disposable.
Exactly.
Something that speaks, speaks well of our community. So, I hope as a board, we, we hold that as our standard.
From my own comments for this, I got a chance to speak to the Fox Associates directors over there and basically put forth my ideas of appearances and how, again, you know, it is going to be there for a very long period of time, well beyond my lifetime. And, you know, this is something that's going to be attractive because it is a gateway to our community before you come into Emmitsburg, so. Commissioner Ritz, you want to say something? No? Okay.
No, it sounds reasonable. Thank you.
All right. And again, you're gonna, we have to go through multiple stages before we ever receive that this board, to be honest with you, that's concerned. All right, moving on, agenda items. First agenda item is approval of the twenty twenty community legacy resolution in support of the facade grants for consideration. Staff?
So, this is resolution number nineteen dash zero one R. This is, basically the board's done this every year since two thousand thirteen. Just a quick fact, since two thousand thirteen, a total of eight hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars has been invested in the town's facade as a result of the community legacy program. This figure includes state funds, resident match funds and town in-kind funds. For twenty twenty, we will be requesting seventy-five thousand dollars, however, it's very standard for them to give fifty thousand dollars to every town that applies. And that's all I have for that.
Yeah. Questions, Commissioners?
I, I have one question.
Commissioner Ritz?
The, one, two, three, third. The third whereas statement regarding the funding area Smart Growth Act. Is that tied to the, the potential sign ordinance in any way? No. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, sir. I think this is a great program. It's totally, well, listen to me, the surfer. It's been a great, great, it's been great for our community, just simply put. It's, it's great where residents get, what is it, a one-to-one match, fifty percent match, is that correct?
Up to twelve thousand five hundred, so.
Which is phenomenal for, you know, upgrading their facades. A lot of people, you know, stretch their dollars and having grant access, it's good and I think the town has been very good about getting the message out to everybody. So, it's very useful, it's a wonderful thing.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
It's just been a great program. It was one of the first things we did, we, several years ago, to go to a sustainable community designation and that be allowed to apply for these and the staff has done a terrific job and worked, a lot of paperwork and a lot of administration and that it's just a lot of people are benefiting in the town. It looks great. They're just picking up all the three billion dollars we put into the square and the sidewalk program, so it's, the state helped us out a great deal there. No, it's a terrific program. It's one of my arms. It's great.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Moving forward, do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen nineteen dash oh one R?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number nineteen dash zero one R, the twenty twenty community legacy resolution in support of the facade grants.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner O'Donnell. Do we have any further discussion? No further discussion, I'll take the vote. All those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, three zero. Commissioner Buckman and Commissioner Sweeney absent. All right. Now, our big one. Agenda item number two, final staff presentation on the proposed sign code ordinance for the proposed amendment to the Planning Commission for a thirty-day review and comment period for consideration. Staff?
Just real quick, so at the conclusion of this presentation tonight, the board is going to vote whether or not to send the sign ordinance to the Planning Commission for review. It's not a vote to accept the ordinance, it's just a vote to move forward with it and let the Planning Commission, Commission review what's set for us so far. So, what we'll do is go over the last sections of the sign code that have not been presented yet. You'll see on page nineteen is a text box of one of the points that the businesses are concerned about is the neon signs. Ms. Nail did some research on that and Zach will go ahead and review all that. You'll find in front of you a letter from the EBPA in support of the sign code or the sign ordinance as written. Zach held four, four community outreach meetings here at the town office the entire month of April, broken out by the zoning districts. These meetings proved to be very helpful, there was a lot of communication back and forth and it's basically this sign ordinance is a joint effort between the town, the staff, the mayor and the businesses and I think you're going to find a good product sitting in front of you. And Zach's going to go over some of the changes that were made due to those meetings and then this extra, the remaining codes. Oh, yes, and I, I don't know if I forwarded the email on from Commissioner Sweeney. He was in the office today, thank you for reminding me. He did give his endorsement to the sign code, he didn't have any recommended changes.
Thanks.
Thanks, I forgot about that.
Zach?
I'll turn it over to Zach.
Do you need to get lights?
Yes, please.
Back there. Okay.
So, also I provided the board a copy of the PowerPoints just in case the projector overheats. It's a good possibility that's going to happen.
Both sides.
Pretty good possibility.
Tough room, tough room.
Yeah, we are getting a new one, so. Manny put that in the budget.
So far, so good.
Yep, we're good so far, yep. It is freezing in here, so we might be good.
Good.
Turned a turtle.
Turned a turtle. Oh, good lord.
Okay, so I'll get started here. This is the third and final present, proposed sign amendment presentation, which will cover sections ninety through two thirty. Please note in no way does this, the town or its employees endorse any business or message depicted in the sign example shown in this presentation. Okay, so basically what has happened since the, we last talked about this in March, March fourth Board of Commissioners meeting. So, the mayor and town staff held four community outreach meetings, which Kathy stated in April, in order to present the proposed amendment and give an opportunity for residents and businesses to be involved in crafting the final amendment. We had a total of twenty-three attendees at these meetings. In order to inform the public of the meetings, we mailed the flyer with every sewer and water bill on Friday, March twenty-ninth. We, the flyer was paid, placed in the town office lobby on Facebook, the website and on Channel ninety-nine. I forwarded the flyer to Mr. Wayne Slaughter, who is the EBPA president and who then forwarded to all EBPA members. Mr. Slaughter has been working diligently to ensure all businesses are aware of the proposed changes and we greatly thank him for that. Ms. Nail also handed a hard copy of the flyer to sixty-five businesses in Emmitsburg and the mayor and I met with multiple residents and businesses in order to discuss the proposed amendment, take comments and answer questions. Let's see, what slide are we on here? Okay. So, the mayor and town staff has listened to the comments and concerns from businesses and residents and we have made the following changes to the proposed amendment since March fourth. So, first, under definitions, we added definitions of street, town and town manager. I was just cleaning up some sections here. Under prohibited sign, and please stop me if you have any questions or concerns. Section forty, prohibited signs, we removed neon signs as prohibited and we added section U basically states any sign which is not expressly permitted under this chapter or which does not satisfy the required criteria for the sign as stated in this chapter. So, this statement was provided by Mr. Clapp, who's the town's attorney, and this will ensure that we do not have to update the code every year with the evolution of sign technology. It is an added protection for the town. Section fifty, signs exempt from permit requirements. We updated the memorial sign, square foot, square footage from three to twenty square feet and for directional signs, we updated that from four to sixteen square feet in area. We also added limited duration signs and portable signs to exempt from the permit requirements, however, they will still be required to meet the requirements of the code, they just won't have to come in and pay for a permit every time. Section sixty, general regulations. We added neon sign as a permitted sign, we did have that as prohibited, it was a big concern of the community, so we added that. Basically, we're going to allow, we're recommending to allow the maximum area for a neon sign is two square feet and one per property. This is the illumination summary table, which can be found on page fourteen of thirty-four of the proposed ordinance. As you can see, the only change we made here was that we added internal illuminated signs as permitted in the village zoning district. For off-premise signs, section eighty, we added that these, that off-premise signs are also permitted in the institutional village zone and neighborhood commercial zoning districts, however, they are subject to all the regulations governing the specific district where the sign is located and not the regulations set forth in that section. We updated, the off-premise signs shall be located no closer than seven hundred and fifty feet from other off-premise signs. We originally had fifteen hundred feet, however, that would cause problems with rudders in the mother seat and schools signs. We located no closer than two hundred and fifty feet from the intersection or interchange of an off-ramp, on-ramp. This would have caused problems with rudders and the silo hill development when that gets developed. Lastly, we located no closer than two hundred and fifty feet from a property line abutting a public park, playground, religious institution, cemetery, school or residential district. This would have affected the rudders because of Emmett Gardens and it would have affected Silo Hill because of the development of Silo Hill. Limited duration signs, we will talk more about this in a few minutes. We removed this section because we are recommending that they are exempt from the permit requirements, however, they are still subject to the regulations in section ninety. Portable signs, we remove that the sign must be located on-premise and within twelve feet of the primary public entrance of the establishment it advertises and instead of that, we added portable signs can only be placed on the right-of-way adjacent to the property where the sign is registered or on private property. They cannot be placed across the street or on a neighboring property. Street pole banner, street pole banners, which we will also talk about more tonight, we added that the town manager must approve banners proposed to be suspended across a town-owned street or on public property. And we added permit requirements, written approval of the street owner such as the town, Frederick County or State of Maryland, must, we must obtain that approval if it's suspended across a public street. For the village zone, we'll talk more about this later, we increased the square footage for the awning canopy sign from twelve to sixteen, projecting sign from six to twelve, freestanding sign from fifteen to twenty, and we are proposing to allow internally lit signage in this zone. And lastly, the last change that we made was in section one ninety, permits and applications. Instead of having people submit two copies of a plan and an application, they would just submit one. Are there any questions or comments on the changes that we have made since the last meeting?
Is there a criteria that the town manager will use when reviewing street pole banners?
Yes, there is. Basically, the town manager will determine if there is a public safety hazard and if there's not, then it'll prohibit.
Terrific, okay. And the other item relates to internally lit signage?
Mm-hmm.
Clarify where that will be permitted. I'm a little unclear.
Sure.
I understand it's the village zone, of course, but...
So, go to page in your agenda packet. One second. So, this is the illumination summary table, so it will tell you in, for internal, which you asked, it's permitted in all districts except for residential and conservation recreation. So, you're going to see a P, which means permitted, and if it's not permitted, it'll be NP for not permitted. Does that answer your question?
It does. I just have a little concern, the last time we went through the process, there was a strong pushback from the community on internally lit signs. I know commercial entities wanted it, but residential individuals like along Main Street weren't thrilled by this. The notion of, what's the term, a blade sign was far better thought of with external illumination on it as opposed to internally lit, so. In the workshops, was the feedback strictly from commercial entities or were there any resident, resident, residents represented?
They were pretty much all commercial. However, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It was opened up to residential.
Sure, sure.
Nobody came.
Sure, I understand.
But you can see what Zach's done in this chart, there are strict guidelines for the amount of illumination they can have, the hours it can be illuminated and how much of their sign can be illuminated. So, there are restrictions on, even though you may be permitted to have an internal illumination, there are restrictions on what you can have and how bright and for how long.
How the code's written, it states that it can be lit half hour past the close or eleven PM.
I appreciate the businesses' view of this, but I, based on the, the feedback we had last time around, I, I'm not a fan of that, of the internally lit sign.
Which, previously?
Correct.
The years, okay.
Which district are you referring to, Mr. or Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, in the village zone, that's where we heard feedback from folks on Long Main Street. That was, that's where we heard the most from, quite frankly.
The village zone?
Correct. And unfortunately, that's where the most competition is for the signs, so.
Okay. If you don't mind, can we take that to the Planning Commission as written?
Oh, absolutely.
And see what they say?
Sure, absolutely.
And then possibly make changes, but I'll make that as a comment to talk to the Planning Commission about that particular...
Yeah, because there's been no feedback from any residential throughout all these meetings, no emails, no any contact, so I think it's a good idea to have the Planning Commission look at it. commission look at it.
Sure. No, no, I'm all about process. Law and order all the time.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. We'll keep trucking on.
I do have a question.
Commissioner Ritz?
Good.
I, because I can't remember, the, the, what's the word again? The illuminate, self, internally illuminated signs, are there, I'm trying to picture it going through town, are there current examples without naming businesses? Are there current businesses within the village zone per se that have such a sign?
They have neon signs.
So that, a neon sign would...
That would fall under that category.
Okay. Because now I'm getting confused, because it sounds like we are permitting a neon sign.
Outside.
Outside?
Well, that's it.
Yeah, one major, or one thing that the business community did request was neon signage.
Okay.
And the mayor and town staff negotiated with that, and we came to have one.
Outside.
Instead of having multiple.
That's outside.
Outside.
What do you know?
Is that correct?
You can have it in your window also.
Right, okay.
So...
Which is limited to two square feet and can only have one.
Right.
Okay.
So you're not talking about these big, bright kiosk-looking lights.
Okay.
That's, that's the restriction on the neon.
Like a big hunk of plastic with a million light bulbs behind it. I could see that as being a illuminated sign.
Yes.
Internally illuminated. But, but the neon, I don't think gives off that much.
Well, it has the gas interior, so that's why they consider it, uh, internal illuminated.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Well, you can have like fake neon too, it's like LED lights.
Right, and that's one thing we did try to do.
It's not neon, but you know, it's the same concept.
I agree, hundred percent.
Okay.
And there goes the projector.
Get what the paper got me.
Well, on July first.
Internally illuminated.
Okay, so, is there any other comments or questions? We will bring that before the, the planning commission on the twentieth. Okay, so, let's see here. Now that that turned off, we're on slide sixteen.
What page number would that be in the packet?
Let's see here, one second. Limited duration signs.
You stopped at street poll banners, correct?
Limited duration. So that's going to be page eight on the handout.
Got it.
Page eight. Okay. So now, let's pick up where we left off after the March fourth meeting. So section ninety, this is limited duration signs. These are non-permanent signs that are displayed on private property for more than thirty days but not intended to be displayed for an indefinite period. So an example of these, I did have pictures, as you can see here on your, uh, handout, such as like coming soon signs, medical space, and then most...
Joe.
Most importantly, um...
I've already seen it, but that's not working right up yet.
Okay, one, the most important one was the real estate signs. So they're your most typical. We are proposing that limited duration signs be exempt from permit requirements, however, they still must abide by the regulations set forth in this section. Next slide, the next page, page nine. This is the summary table for limited duration signs. As you can see, the regulations are broken down by non-residential and residential districts. Next slide, in the current code for the limited duration signs, Commissioner Buckman did request that we do a comparison. So, these are currently regulated as temporary signs, and instead of going through all the specific numbers to put people to sleep, are there any questions or comments on this specific, specific section? Okay, here we're back on. Okay, any comments, questions?
You're good to go.
Hearing none, we will move on. So the next section is temporary signage. This is a non-permanent sign that is located on private property that can be displayed for no more than thirty consecutive days at one time and no more than two times per year. Temporary signs are exempt from permit requirements, however, they must still comply with the requirements set in this section. This is the summary table for temporary signage. As you can see, the regulations are broken down again by non-residential and residential The current code for temporary signs, I have it listed, uh, what the current requirements are. Are there any comments or questions on the temporary sign section? Hearing none, we'll move on. Portable signage, uh, section one-ten, these are signs designed to be transported or moved and not permanently attached to the ground of building or other structure. Hours of display, portable signs shall not be displayed on any premise before six AM and shall be removed before, each day at or before ten PM. However, all portable signs must be taken in during hours of non-operation of the business and during inclement weather. One sandwich board is permitted per establishment. Portable signs are exempt from permit requirements, however, they still must comply with the requirements that's set forth in this section. As you can see from the screen, there are two types of portable signage. The first is the sandwich board sign, which is on your right-hand side. Uh, this is also known as an A-frame sign, and also the vehicular sign. As you can see, the one above would be permitted per the code, and the one below would be For the current code, they are prohibited, they're not allowed. Are there any comments or questions on the portable sign section?
What, what was the timeframe? Again, the, the, the...
Sure.
Hours of...
Yep. They shall not be displayed on any premise before six AM and shall be removed each day at or before ten PM.
The premise to the, so the, the business itself.
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody's driving a van, it's their company and it's off-street parking, they're safe.
Yeah, if, I'm sorry, say it again? If they pull...
Hypothetically speaking, somebody has a business downtown, and they have a work van with their company on the van, and then at home, they, at nighttime, they drive home, let's say, to Silo Hill, and they're parked in their driveway or parked off-street. Is that going to be a problem?
Absolutely not.
Okay, because it's not their, it's not the business premise.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Are there any other comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll keep moving on here. The street poll banners, section one-twenty, these are banners suspended above a public sidewalk and are attached to a single street pole. These signs shall not contain any commercial advertising. Banners suspended across a public street are located on public property, again, must be approved by the town manager, and the town manager will issue a permit only upon a determination that the banner will not jeopardize safety or create detrimental traffic operations. Written approval is also required for banners proposed to be suspended across county or state-owned roads. For the current code, I have it listed here, they're not permitted on publicly-owned street poles whatsoever, and they're regulated as temporary signage. Are there any questions or comments on the street poll banner section?
Street poll banners versus structure-to-structure banners. Are structure-to-structure banners considered prohibited, or under the poll, street poll banner format, are they, would they, if this is accepted, would they be permitted?
They're still the same thing, because it's suspended across a public street.
Okay, so...
So we would still have jurisdiction.
So the question that I have then, and this is for town staff and the board, uh, there's an organization that is a nonprofit at this time, uh, having an event in town that has a structure-to-structure banner that they would like to use. As this is in flux at this time, would there be consideration given if they were to approach town staff to unfurl this from structure-to-structure?
The only one that the town staff can approve would be, well, we would give initial approval, would be anything that goes over town roads. We don't have the authority to grant permission to go over a county road or a state road.
Okay.
And that's where the problem lies.
So, as a state road issue, that's the, uh, yeah.
State highway.
Interesting.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Does that allow, does that get permitted ever, or is that considered a safety hazard?
From my understanding, it's considered a safety hazard, and the state never approves them. That's my understanding from talking with state representatives.
Hanging up, above a street?
Correct.
Okay.
So something...
I mean, they can, there's certainly nothing that prohibits them from reaching out to the state.
Sure.
To, to attempt to get permission.
Sure, sure.
Um, I mean, I would encourage them to do that, but at our level, we can't, we can't, we don't have the authority.
Makes perfect sense. Okay, good. That's, uh, food for thought. I will pass that along. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. All right. Moving on. So these are section one-thirty, signs in the conservation recreation district. The CR district is, let's see, is shown here on the zoning map in green. The majority of this property is owned by the town and is in our park, our parks. Instead of going through a bunch of the numbers, please let me know if you have any questions, and then we can answer any questions that you may have. Give you guys a couple minutes to read. And this gives us, uh, the town more authority to have better scoreboards, bigger scoreboards. So are there any questions or comments on the signs in the conservation recreation section?
Would a mural be considered a wall sign? So if someone were to draw like a baseball player, that's considered a, okay.
It is, however, it's exempt from the permit requirements. So they can, if the town wanted to do a mural there, you wouldn't have to get a permit. Or a baseball organization, it's our structure, so they would have to get our approval, but they wouldn't have to get a permit.
And for approval process for, let's say, an entity is reserving use of the ballfields, they have an organization come forward and say, "We want to have a sign in the outfield." We, as the community, have the say as to whether that sign can be there, or does it apply to their lease of, or their use of the field?
It would be the mayor and town manager, and I'm sure they would probably bring it to the board if it was something like that, or would it be just the mayor?
You're talking about that somebody wants to sponsor.
Correct.
And put their billboard up.
Oh, you're not talking about murals anymore?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Moving beyond murals, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
So like an outfield sign, and somebody wants to like air a strong opinion about something, for example, um, and you know, it's the committee to be annoying, or whatever. And they want to sponsor the team, and they're ready to cut a check, and the team looks at the check and doesn't worry about the sign so much, do we have the first right of refusal?
Yes, we do.
Great.
Yes, we do. Okay, so hearing none, we'll move on to the next district.
I'll just back up.
Sure.
The reason I bring that up is that's actually happened. I mean, there, there, in MML, this was brought up a long time ago, and...
Since...
Make sure that we have these things in place.
That's crazy that that actually happens. If it does come to the town, since we own the property, we definitely have the right refusal.
Great.
Okay, so the next section is going to be signs in the residential districts. This is R-one, R-two, and R-three. So the residential districts are shown here on the screen, the zoning map, yellow, beige, and orange. I think they're pretty, they're coming up pretty well there. So again, I did a side-by-side comparison, instead of reading through all the numbers, putting everyone to sleep, please let me know if you have any questions. It's basically very, very similar to the existing. So are there any questions or comments on this section? Hearing none, we'll move on. Signs in the institutional district, section one-fifty. The institutional district is shown here on the zoning map in purple, and we actually had a very, very high, we only had four people come, but it's a very, very high percentage of participants, because there's only a few properties in the institutional district. Did the side-by-side comparison? And please let me know if there's any questions or comments, and... So what we did was, we broke it down by acre, acreage, and then there are, since the, for an example, there's one business in the institutional zone, which is massive, so we did put individual sign restrictions, so they can't have one the size of their entire building, which they wouldn't do anyway, so... So hearing no questions or concerns?
Just, is anyone, with the proposed changes, would any of those businesses be in violation?
No, actually, they would greatly benefit from this.
That's what I thought, okay, just making sure.
There, right now, every single business in the institutional zone is maxed out on their signage, so none would be able to have anymore. They're all maxed out at fifty square feet, and they're way over that already, so they wouldn't be allowed anything else.
Okay.
So they're very, very supportive of this. Next section is the village zone, section one-sixty. The village zone is, uh, shown here on the zoning map in white with blue dots. It may be hard to see, but for those at home, it's the, um, Main Street, North and South Seton Avenue. Here's the side-by-side comparison. Out of all the districts, this is the highest percentage of, um, participants. Are there any questions or comments on the village zone?
Yes, um, looking in the proposed column, second bullet point, insulation may not damage or require removal of historic materials. I like it, do we have a standard or criteria in place related to historic materials?
Yes, so our architectural guidelines would be the staff's guidelines on how to determine what's architectural and what's not, so, um, we would use that.
So, do we say that in any of our ordinances here, or proposed ordinances, that that will be the criteria, though?
We do not.
Okay, so then that would not allow us to do that. I mean, we can use that as a reference, but it's not enforceable unless we accept the architectural guidelines as code.
It's a good point.
So, if we could somehow or another look at that related to this, in this context, I think that would be a useful thing.
Okay, thank you, I put that in my notes.
Sure, for sure. We're all pulling the same rope.
Okay, any other commissioners?
Ms. Ritz?
Go ahead.
As the village zone would affect most of the businesses, I think that had concerns, did, did the proposed changes, is that incorporating anything that might have been discussed with, uh, some meetings that you had?
Yes, we made a lot of changes based on, um, feedback from the village zone businesses.
And, do you want examples?
And also...
Yeah, like an example, what's an example? I have, I have all the old, um, the old documents, but just...
I think if you go to the beginning, um, I think Zach went over all the changes that predominantly came from the village zone meetings, where he highlighted the areas that have changed since March fourth.
Such as?
The addition of the neon signs, because staff's original ordinance did not allow neon signs. That was something that the village zone was very interested in having.
An example I'm looking at would be, um, size of signs potentially, like, you know, existing is X amount of square feet, now Y is, is Y-square feet, the proposed. Has anything been, uh, made smaller, you know, more restrictive in that sense?
Nothing has been made smaller. We did increase the sizes on, let's see, the, the wall and, the wall, reason being, there's a business that wants to build a bigger internally lit sign.
Okay.
Um, their current... Their current sign is the 16 square footage. However, it's a non-conforming sign because it was, um, established before the current sign ordinance was written. So they would actually have to go smaller if they, uh, if the new ordinance is not passed how it is. So that's one thing they asked us to do is increase it from 12 to 16, so they can basically replace the same exact size.
Okay.
So that's one example.
Thank you.
Another business, um, they have a sign that, um, they need increased also. It's a projecting sign. Their old one was six square feet and they want a 12 square feet one, so.
Okay.
And staff believes it's, and the mayor believes it's reasonable and it's not unsightly.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm, I'm okay right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so next we will move to the signs in the, um, Commercial B1, B2, Industrial Park, uh, Office Research and Industrial Districts. These districts are shown here on the zoning map in red, light blue, blue and green with lines and white with black dots. Um, we did have discussions, lengthy discussions with one business that is, um, going to be coming in. And they, um, basically highly recommend the new ordinance and they actually, um, can't say they wouldn't, wouldn't come in without it, but they're very pushing us to definitely get this passed because they need it.
Okay. The suspense is killing me.
Okay, so are we talking about monument signs, for example, or what's the?
I'm sorry?
Are we talking about monument signs in this context of Commercial, Industrial, or Office Research or ORI districts? Is that the?
Monument signs?
Yes.
Like?
Yeah.
Tall?
Not massive, but yeah.
Okay, well, massive to you might not be massive for me.
Sure, yeah.
Do we have a maximum height defined for?
Yes, we do.
Okay, like, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, if you could be really explicit about what the monument sign standards are and compare that to our friends down the road who have a full moon Burger King sign that is visible, you know, to satellites and such.
So we, um, at the last meeting, we discussed the off-premise signs. So we do have, um, restrictions based on speed limit. So I'll go to page. Let's go to page, um, 36 on your agenda packet. That will discuss the maximum sizes that are permitted. So basically, the maximum size on, to say for an example, Route 15 would be a 10 by 5.
Okay, and height?
Or, excuse me, 10 by 15.
Sure, okay.
Um, height. One second here.
Thank you. Line C, 115 feet, is that accurate, or?
That's, yes, that's accurate, yep.
Okay.
That's well below Burger.
So we're
That's well below Burger King.
Yeah, we're all, yeah.
I just worry about Cessnas, you know?
Are there any other comments or questions on that section?
And is 15 feet the top of the sign or the top of the support to the sign?
Top of the sign.
Terrific.
And that does satisfy, um, the business requests.
Great.
Is anyone currently in violation of that?
No. There is a, um, billboard on North Seton, however, it's been here forever, so it's a non-conforming sign.
Is that the one right at Flat Run, like, right inside the property?
Yes, yep. If they would ever want to replace, um, in that district, they could not. It's a residential district, so.
Okay.
So hearing no other questions, comments? We'll move on to, uh, section 180. Removal of unsafe, unlawful, or abandoned signage. So here's the current, um, for the proposed, for unsafe and unlawful signs, signs shall be removed within 30 days if it is unsafe, uh, is in danger of falling, or it becomes so deteriorated that it no longer serves a useful purpose of communication. Uh, the town may remove or cause to be removed the sign at the expense of the owner in the event the owner has not complied with the terms of the 30-day notice. In the event of immediate danger, the town may remove the sign immediately upon issuance notice to the owner. For abandoned signs, um, signs must be removed within 180 days becoming abandoned. The town may remove or cause to be removed the sign at the expense of the owner after 180 days. Are there any questions or comments on the removal of unsafe, unlawful, or abandoned signs? The most common would be, um, which we talked about before, snipe signs, basically the signs that say, you know, I'm going to buy your house, or things like that along the roadways. Uh, we would have the right to remove those. Because they get a little out of control sometimes. Um, section 190, permits and applications. Um, for the current, the applicant may not appeal, or currently, the applicant may not appeal a denial or partial denial to the Board of Appeals. Um, propose, the applicant may submit a, uh, resubmit or appeal the decision to the Board of Appeals within 30 days of the determination of the zoning administrator. The applicant may seek a variance from the Board of Appeals, however, they must show hardship. Are there any questions or comments on the permits and application section?
Do we have a definition for hardship?
We should in the zoning ordinance.
Terrific, okay, I have faith in that.
One question. And I do apologize, I asked this before, but I just want to make sure the illuminated signs, um, it's a requirement of certification. What, what specific certification are you looking for?
So, um, you mean for the brightness?
Yes.
Or for the off-premise signs?
For the bright, the, um, brightness. Let me see, which, uh?
Fourth bullet point.
The fourth, the fourth bullet point of the
Oh.
Proposed, um,
So
And 190.
Typical, regular signs such as wall-mounted signs, um, if it's, if you allow internal illuminated signs, for example, in the Village Zone, they would not have to do that. These are only for the, um, the signs that are digital display. And the, um, message center, so I don't have an example on the board here. You ever see, you go past the school and you see, like, um, you know, we have off on Monday?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't think there's any around, but
Those, yeah.
If there were, like, what? What, what kind of cer- certification are you, would you be looking for?
Oh, basically from the manufacturer.
So it's like, it just comes with, with the sign itself and it was tested to?
Exactly.
I always forget the standard of measurement for that. Is it lumens or?
It's lumens and nits, yeah.
Nits, okay.
So basically, when they apply for the permit, they'll provide a certification, um, from the sign manufacturer that states what it is.
Thank you.
Okay, no, any other questions? So the next section, these are, um, section 200, non-conforming signs, and section 210, signs on legal, nine, non-conforming uses. Um, they're very similar, so I lumped them together. So the current, uh, basically states signs legally, legally in existence at the time of the adoption of the ordinance, um, which do not conform to the requirements of the ordinance shall be considered non-conforming, or another term, which is, um, widely known as grandfathered. Um, the pro- proposed is the same as the current. Um, signs on the legally, on the premises of legally non-conforming uses, such as an office in a residential area, may remain until the existing use of the premise is discontinued. So we're not going to go around and, um, make people take down their signs if it's legally in existence. Um, Ms. Nail is going to go around and make, um, note, make a list of non-conforming signs. So it protects the businesses and residences. So future planners or future zoning administrators can't go around and say that, you know, your sign's not legally conforming.
Is she making a visual record also, like, photographing it as well as note taking?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the question I have, um, I'm looking at the proposed. A hypothetical, and I'll, I'll throw it out there. So if, for example, a restaurant currently has a non-conforming sign and the restaurant changes ownership, will, as a result of the ownership, the sign now have to be brought to conforming?
No, the sign goes along with the property.
Okay, so it conveys, that grandfathered status conveys?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Unless it closes.
But if, if at some point in time, well, that's a good question. If it isn't used continuously, so for example, if they renovate the property, does that, is that counting as closing, like, they are closed for business, or do they have some?
That goes back to the last section we just talked about.
Okay.
Um, the removal of abandoned signs.
Okay.
So after so many days, it would be called, considered abandoned.
Okay.
If it's not in use of the business. That's section 180.
Well, I'm
That, that wouldn't be considered abandoned. I mean, if they're, if they're legally in business in the state of Maryland and they're renovating it, that's not considered abandoned. Abandoned would be the, the business up and left and, and it's sent empty for six months.
Okay.
And then sold, that would be different.
Okay, true.
I, I missed your renovation there, yeah. If they're renovating, it's good.
We have clarity, okay, thank you.
Any other comments on that one? Nope. Okay, going on. The substitution clause, this is something new. So the current ordinance says none. Um, propose, to the extent that this chapter allows a sign containing a commercial copy, it shall allow a non-commercial sign to the same extent. Uh, the purpose of this provision is to prevent any inadvertent favoring of commercial speech over non-commercial speech. This provision does not create a right to increase the total amount of signage on a parcel. Is there any questions on this provision? Hearing none, we'll go to the violations. For the current violations, they, uh, shall be deemed a municipal infraction punishable of a fine of $100. Each day a violation continues shall be considered a new violation. Um, propose, any violation of the provisions of this chapter shall be deemed a municipal infraction punishable to a fine of $1,000. Uh, each day a violation continues shall be a new violation. And the reason why we increase this amount of the fine, um, is in extreme conditions, we may use this. The increase in the fine amount is recommended due to increased staff costs and also lawyer fees. So if we have to go to Frederick County, uh, Mr. Clapp would have to, um, go with us. Are there any questions or comments in the violation section?
Yes, I have one.
Ms. Ritz?
The $1,000 fee, what, what's the? So they get a warning in the mail, they have a certain amount of time to comply, and then they don't comply, then the, then the, then the fine kicks in.
We would start real low, so it may be $75 a day. If it gets the town manager would ultimately have, she, um, Ms. Willetts approves every violation that we find, so.
And typically, we send a first notice, a second notice, and then after, if there's non-compliance after the second notice, we'll begin with a fine, then. We, we certainly give them more ample opportunity to respond.
Now, to, to just touch on what, what, um, Mr. Golden just said, it would starting, starting low, you mean the fine would start lower? Because it, as written, it
It should, it should read, it should be punishable by a fine up to
Up to, okay.
A thousand dollars is what it should
Sounds like it's, it's going to be a thousand dollars right away.
And I think it's actually in your, in your agenda packet, it says up to $1,000. I think it just didn't make it on to the, the, um, excuse me, the presentation.
Yeah, it says, um, how the ordinance reads. It states, uh, failure to comply with this chapter or any order or requirement imposed under the section, or under this chapter is punishable by a fine not to exceed $1,000.
Okay.
Per day, does it say?
Per day.
Okay.
Each day a violation continues is a separate municipal infraction.
Terrific.
So that would be if we're, you know, we're going two months in and no one's making a difference. All right, that's an example, might be more or less. So if there's no other comments or questions, that's all I have.
I got a question action.
Sure.
Um, concerning the planning zoning meeting scheduled for June 20th. At that point, where are we as far as the status, or I guess the, you know? Would, would, and I said, say, that we're looking at proposed amendment to Planning Commission for a 30-day review and comment period for consideration. When we meet, planning meeting meets in two weeks, where are we as far as in the, uh, role of this?
So basically, if the board so chooses tonight to, um, pass the amendment on, the Planning Commission has 30 days to review and comment. They will provide comments or deny, recommend denial.
Okay.
Or recommend approval as is. Um, then the commissioners will see it again.
Back to the board in July, then?
Most, well, it's going to be August.
Or August, I guess.
Yep, it's going to be August, and because the solicitor can't attend July's meeting.
Okay.
Uh, a public hearing will be held, and then the board will have the decision to make changes to it and come back September, or?
Okay, so a couple more meetings, okay, just want to know the process, got it, thank you.
I have a question regarding the, the planning, because you did mention they could either, um, approve it or deny it outright. Could they, could the Planning Commission also recommend some changes?
Yes, they, they're only a recommending body in this instant, so they can recommend approval of it completely, recommend it with modifications.
Modifications, just making sure, okay.
Or recommend denial altogether.
Okay.
Either way, it'll come back to you in August.
Okay, got it, okay. We're still a couple steps away from, okay, this becoming permanent.
The August meeting should be pretty easy.
Okay.
It's just going to be going over Planning Commission comments and then the public hearing if any public has any more comments.
Okay, nice. Other questions, commissioners?
I have none.
So we are asking the board to forward the proposed amendment to the Planning Commission for their required 30-day review period.
Do we have a motion to make a, um, forward the proposed amendment to the Planning Commission for a 30-day review period?
I'll make a motion to send the plant, the proposed sign ordinance to the Planning Commission for their 30-day
30-day review period.
Review period.
Okay, all right, a motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir, do we need to modify the motion to include the recommendations related to making the language more airtight, or is the discussion sufficient for that?
You, I would add your, um, recommendations to the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So
Can I, I'd like to withdraw my motion and, and then
Motion's been withdrawn, okay, new motion? Okay.
Appropriately, thanks, sorry about that.
No, 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 I, I was seeking clarity. Okay, so, uh, the motion having been removed, I will make a motion to accept the let me get the name correct, sorry. I make a motion to accept the ordinance to amend Title 17 of the Code of Emitsburg entitled Zoning related to the sign code 17.38 with modifications as discussed in the June 3rd town meeting.
Make sure you mention to forward it to the Planning Commission.
And forwarding same to the Planning Commission.
That's sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
I second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
No? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 3-0. Commissioner Sweeney and Commissioner Buckman absent. Moving on to setting the agenda for the next meeting in July 1st. If I could just say sort of selfish remark on myself on this, I'm leaving on July 2nd at like 4 o'clock in the morning on the airplane. So if staff and fellow commissioners could keep the agenda on July 1st, uh, sparse, I would really appreciate it. I know that's a selfish remark, but, uh, I appreciate it.
Well, I have four items, um, one
I'm just, I'm just being honest.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
One may possibly be postponed, so that will help. And the other one, if the board wishes, can be postponed. So I'll give you what I have, and then you can make the determination what you want for July 1st. I think staff would be very happy if the July 1st meeting was short, too.
So I'm just saying.
Uh, first one would be for consideration, the approval of the bid to purchase the new mini dump that was funded through fiscal year 19.
Consideration of, can you repeat the last part?
Uh, for consideration, approval of bid to purchase new mini dump that was funded in FY 19.
Mini dump, okay.
For consideration, approval of the forestry bid for select harvest of Stand 5. That item may be postponed.
Stand five. Okay.
Number three, this was at direction of the board, for dis- discussion and possible consideration, the firewood access policy. If you would like to, we could postpone that to August. Um, number four would be for consideration, approval of the bid for the cross-connection-controlled preferred contractor. I would like to get this one in.
Okay.
As well as the mini dump, at least for July.
Approval bid for cross...
For approval of, approval of bid for cross-connection control preferred contractor.
Control preferred contractor. All right, board? I will ask for your consideration and kindness.
Um, well, I want to add, no. Party of the Blanchers July 3rd, but beyond that, um, perhaps we could postpone the firewood item to August, uh, as requested.
I hear.
Just for clarification, the mini dump is an excavator or is it a hauler?
It's, um, a hauler.
Okay.
It's, it's snow plow, salt spreader, um, it's, it was 2002. It's the one they use primarily for most of their works in the parks and water links, leaks, excuse me.
Okay, and anything else that we want to?
Could we possibly postpone the, the bid for the stand five? Is that really necessary in July, or do you need that one?
I really don't want, if we can get, move forward with it.
Okay.
I would like to have it so that it gives time for the contractor, whoever's awarded the bid, to do the work before, um, winter.
Okay.
But there may be internally why we need to postpone it. I will certainly send an email out as soon as I know.
Okay, so as it stands, we would have three items right now, we take, if we take off the discussion of the firewood.
Yes.
Ms. Ritz?
I know it's three days away from that. I think historically, sometimes we have moved the meeting for the, that, that falls the week of July 4th to the following week. It's, it's, it's not, um, I, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other, I don't know if we, if you want to consider...
I think I'm actually gone the following Monday, so it would actually, it's even worse for me, yeah.
You know, the red eye.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll deal with the red eye, I'll deal with the red eye.
And then that might not fit everyone else's schedule either, so it's, I'm just throwing that out there, it's either, either ways.
Okay.
You're suggesting July 8th for the town meeting?
I know I'm out, I know I'm not back yet. Yeah, I'm not back yet. But I know I can do the, I can do the first, it just, we have three items, that's reasonable to me personally. So basically, I'll say these back to the board here. What we have here is, one, consideration of approval of, of the bid for the mini dump, which is like, is it a dump truck, is that what I'm just laughing here? Okay, I'm just making sure, okay. Uh, two, approval of the forest bid for the stand five harvesting.
For consideration.
Consideration, sorry, consideration of the forest bid for stand five.
Yes.
And then, three would be approval of bid for the cross-connection...
Control.
Control, preferred contractor, sorry.
For consideration.
Consideration, sorry.
Yes.
What is the will of the board? Are we good with these three?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented for July 1st, 2019.
Second.
Okay, comm, um, motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Any other business, gentlemen? Staff?
Just remember, Community Day is coming up.
Community Day.
We would like to see everybody out there, you know, as a community participating, it is a fun day, it's a fun weekend, uh, a great time to get everyone together, uh, show up in numbers and have fun.
Got it. Mr. Barr, anything? Okay, do we have any sign or text amendments that have to be signed later on, tonight? Okay. Okay, got it. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's been made to adjourn the meeting, and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion passes 3-0. Uh, meeting closed at 9:05 on June 3rd.